For those of you that need to know them. And at this time, if we'll do our roll call.
Ms. Marsette?
Here.
Ms. Hildy? Ms. Bellamy? Mr. Donnelly? Mr. Holloman? Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
And Ms. Vekales? Mr. Rivera? Ms. LaFrance? Mr. Constant? Mr. Dunbar asked to be excused. Mr. Dyson? Ms. Kennedy? Mr. Perez Verdia? Mr. Peterson? Ms. Quinn Davidson asked to be excused. Oh, are you? Ms. Weddleton? Ms. Salatell? You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and if I could, Mr. Holloman, lead us in the flag salute, please. Oh, sorry.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And happy Flag Day. Today's Flag Day, so as I got reminded. We have minutes of previous joint meetings.
I move to accept the previous joint meeting minutes.
Is there any dissension or changes to those minutes? If not, we will go ahead and accept those as approved. Approval of agenda, is there any change to the agenda? Everybody had a chance to look at it? Okay? And agenda is approved. So at this time, first I want to say welcome, new members for Assembly. It's kind of nice to see you guys here. Always good to see new faces and congratulations and welcome, I think, to your first joint Assembly School Board meeting. So, thank you.
It's like a day job, right?
Yeah, it is a little bit. So, first thing on our agenda is People Mover Youth Connect Program. And who will be, ah-ha, there we go. How about right here? Since we've got a mic there. Right on top.
Thank you. Good morning, my name's Jamie Acton, I'm the Director of Public Transportation. Thank you for having us. With me I have Bart Rudolph, our Planning Manager. And we just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the Youth Connect Program, partnership between People Mover and ASD. Youth Connect started in 2015 with three schools. Today, I'm pleased to present to you that we now are working with 42 of your middle, secondary, alternative, and charter schools. The program, you know, has grown, ridership is increasing, and new for this year, we allowed students to ride through the summer. We're really excited to be able to offer that seamless, consistent transportation for your students. So, right now, we're working on the renewal. We appreciate the continued partnership and support, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you. So, I just wanted to give that quick overview, and if there's any questions or comments about the program, happy to answer those. Yes, ma'am?
Can you share some of the ridership numbers and if you're seeing any trends on which schools or which areas might be using those the most?
So, in 2017, we did a significant service change. We went from a coverage service model to a high-frequency service model. So, some of the ridership numbers are a little bit different than what we're seeing today. 2015 to '16 ridership during the school year was 67,042 trips, and '16 to '17 was 82,159 trips, '17 to '18, 95,387, and then this school year that just wrapped up. So, this does not include anything over the summer, 141,616 trips. So, really great ridership increases, so.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm trying to figure out how to use it. Thank you through the Chair. Thank you so much for your report. Just a couple of questions. I'd like to know a little bit more about sort of why it's being used and how it's being used in terms of the, you know, the time of day and the sort of your sense of how it's being used by students, and also whether it has changed the usage of other transportation provided by the district, whether it's just in addition to, or whether you've seen fewer people ride in other means, school buses, those kinds of things, so.
Through the Chair. I believe at this point, this is just a complementary service to the transportation that the district's providing. One of the things that we are seeing and have heard from whether it's teachers, or faculty, or parents even, is that my child was able to access after-school programs, my child is able to access part-time employment, my child is able to access the school itself because it doesn't have transportation provided to it. We've got some really great quotes and testimonials. I don't have them on me right now, I wish I would have brought them, but I went low-tech today. So, quotes from some principals, some parents, and some teachers of students within the district that are using them. So, I'm happy to share those, that good news and, you know, how people are using the system. To your point also, Ms. Hildy, we, right now, our technology is about 10 years old on the buses. We just secured a 4.2 million grant that's going to help us upgrade those over the next several years. So, our level of detail for school-by-school use right now isn't, we don't collect data at that level yet. So, we hope to get there, but we do know that, you know, we have several schools that are on the high-frequency routes, East Bartlett, I'm trying to think of West, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on our schools right now. And we do see, you know, good ridership numbers coming from those schools and participation. We do a lot of outreach to the schools, and the ones on the high-frequency networks are really, they're reaching out to us, asking, hey, can you provide the materials? Can you come out and see us? We've got, our students are relying on this service. But, so to the earlier point, definitely complementary, I believe, at this point, so.
I'd just like to add very quickly that we've been joined by Mr. Peterson and Mr. Donnelly for the record. Yes, mister?
Just wanted to clarify, so in terms of the why it's being used, generally speaking, you're seeing it used for after-school activities, for employment, are those are the main things that it's being used for at this point?
I believe so. That's what we're hearing, mostly general feedback from the users and parents.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Dyson?
I wish I knew, I was more up to speed, but I assume that...
Mr. Dyson, could you speak into the mic, please?
I assume that because of the very admirable board policy of allowing students to go to school, whatever school they want to, that bus program adds some flexibility so that kids can do that. And then, per that option, the default can often be only for parents who, one parent's not working and they've got three cars and so on, so. Go ahead and say, yeah, there's a little bit of that going on.
I think that what we're seeing is that if you have the availability to access your school through transit, students may be doing that. Whether it's, I get to choose whatever school I go to or not, I don't have that level of detail yet. But I think that us providing that as an option is a really great, great opportunity.
And just to follow up for the future, if I may, start, all of us like the idea of neighborhood schools, and we'd like kids to be able to walk safely to school, and there are real barriers to that. Do you all have an ongoing updated list of the schools that it's dangerous for kids to walk to because of snow clearing, or bad roads, or steep hills, or something? And if you do, where to be working collectively, you know, in the long term to solve those?
I believe the Traffic Department is here to talk about some other things, so that's a great segue for Stephanie to present, but also, we do work very collaboratively with the Planning Department, Traffic Department, in looking at how we can participate in those activities. So, there's definitely discussions that we can be part of and are part of in regards to the safe access of...
Thank you, thank you.
And Mr. Dyson, we'll have some information on that. We have them here to talk about that exact thing on some route, so. Mrs. Quinn Davidson?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chair. My question is about, sort of related to what Mr. Dyson asked. So, I understand that we have a lot of great schools in the district, some of which you have to lottery into, and there is not bus service to those schools. I'm concerned that that has a negative impact upon people who have kids, who have parents who work multiple jobs and can't drive them to those schools. And I, I'm just curious what the School Board is doing to evaluate the possibility of providing bus service to those schools so that we can make sure that they're equitable, and then also if the program you're doing has any impact on that ability to get to school through a bus service.
Well, I would say as far as busing, I mean, it was something we would like to do, but right now, even our dollars for our busing are short, and we have to pull those out of our general fund. So, until we can get more money, I'll let Dr. Bishop talk a little bit more about that, but.
Thank you. So, probably the one-offs, we call them, of kind of some innovative ways to get kids to school. We do allow, for instance, if the bus that comes to my neighborhood, they're really draw areas to neighborhoods, that you could get to the closest bus stop of the school that you want to get to, to your home. So, we do allow that. So, it's not only, if we can figure out a way of a bus service that's passing through, we do that. We utilize the King Tech High School busing system because that system, although it's offset from the general busing times, it does allow you to get from, you know, South Anchorage High School to the university area on a bus if you need to, for King Tech or transfer to other programs like middle college, things like that. So, we use the existing routing that we have for students to get to their home school, and if you have a choice school, then we use that routing to a lotteryed school, like a different, you know, to use that. So, it's certainly not as robust as we could with additional funding. What we've done this year is to offer, which really, it's good for kids, it's good for families, it really struggled internally in our system, is we now have a fourth-tier bus system, and our preschools are going to be offset from elementary, middle, and high schools now, to have a fourth-tier busing because we have to reuse the same buses all the time to not increase costs. And, for instance, the district made a significant move, the board approved, using funds to add additional preschools coupled with grants, and the busing then is going to be for these students, we had to make them a fourth tier so that it wouldn't increase the cost. Busing students is a high cost. An additional way that folks ride is whole classrooms will get on city buses to go to field trips during the day. So, something that was sometimes out of opportunity because of cost, you know, $5 to $7 to pull together for a school bus to take you somewhere. Classroom teachers are utilizing the bus system to be able to take all other students, jump on, and go to a field trip or an alternate spot. Sometimes it's an alternate school. And that's actually some of the utilization, too. If a kid has a class, is at, you know, say Bartlett or somewhere, and they have a class at a different school, they will transfer among schools. So, they kind of take their school bus to one school and a city bus to another school back again. So, just some ideas, but certainly we could, you know, make that grow. It would be resources, though. So, but when we work with families, we just try to figure out with schools and families how we can support them.
Ms. Salatell, and then Ms. France.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Acton, are you asking the students your survey questions? I said, I heard you say families, or parents and teachers, but are you actually surveying the students who are riding?
Through the Chair. At this point, I don't believe we've done any students surveying formally at this point, but it's something that we could potentially look at, for sure. I think it would be great feedback to receive from the users.
Thank you.
Ms. France. Turn your mic on.
You're not on.
Right there on top.
On now? Okay, thanks.
Is it on?
Two questions? Sounds like it's on. To Dr. Bishop, on the field trips, when schools use them, use the city buses to go on field trips, are those chartered? Or made it, no, they walk like to a bus stop? Okay. And then, second question has to do with Girdwood, and I understand that Girdwood students are bused to South Anchorage High School, and there may be two buses that run to provide for an activity bus after the school day. Has there been any discussion about any kind of collaboration, and maybe there already is, between like commuters and those who take the activity bus home from south?
Through the Chair. I'm not aware of any collaboration on that level. I do know that we have informally kind of kicked off the availability to look at, and we talked a couple of years ago about this, what's called school pool? And so, convening car pools, bike pools, walking pools of students that would potentially travel as a group. You just approved, actually, Dollars' last meeting at the Assembly for the technology platform that hosts school pools. So, I think that's something that we have a tool in place and that we could potentially look at how we could serve that commuting population back and forth, whether it's through parents providing the transportation or whatnot. On the commuter level, more, whether it's education or employment-related, we do have several van pools that travel back and forth through Girdwood. Our van pool provider is interested in looking at ways that they can branch out, and whether that's a parent driving a group of kids back and forth or whatnot. We have some other opportunities there that potentially could be explored.
Thank you.
Thank you for your information today. You gave a broad number of utilization of around 140,000 rides. Do you have a way to break that down for different parts of the community, like Eagle River specifically, to see what their potential utilization is?
Sorry, through the Chair. Right now, we aren't able to capture the data by service area or school based on the technology that we have. Once we move to a different technology, we'll be able to drill down to that a little bit farther. This would be where the surveying, I think, would come in very handy. You know, are you utilizing the system? If you are, are you not? And look at it at that level. It just takes some staff time and resources to go out and make that connection. But unfortunately, I don't, the commuter service out there, the limited hours, I don't know that it would necessarily work for students.
Okay, I'd just like to say that Mr. Weddleton has joined us for the record. Ms. Hildy?
Thank you, I just have one last one. You know, you've doubled the ridership of children, has there any been any safety issues? And what have you done to address the increase of having minors on buses?
Through the Chair. We've not been made aware of any safety issues. We haven't heard of anything out of the normal day-to-day things that we deal with through public transportation. Nothing at this point has come to my attention that's been involving the minors or anything like that, that are participating as part of the program. So, we, safety is for our riders, our employees, that's of the utmost importance for us. So, if there had been a problem, I believe we would be addressing it immediately, so thank you.
Ms. Bellamy?
I know how to work this. Thank you for your report. My question is really, how do families and parents know about your program? I know you take things to this, you take a package to each school, so who hands those out? How do we, what is your understanding on that?
Thank you, through the Chair. We have a variety of marketing efforts that take place as part of the program, but our connection points have primarily been, this last year, we tried to streamline it. So, we wanted to put it through, I believe it's David Whiting, Contract Management. So, administrators, teachers, staff, faculty, were funneling through David. He was our point of contact, and then we were able to disseminate the information through him. So, my understanding is David is kind of our gatekeeper, and, oh, sorry, David's our gatekeeper, and he's our point of contact, so we work directly with him and then address the needs as they come up.
And one follow-up question. So, the 141,000 rides this school year, how, do we get those numbers, that data, from the district or from the swipes on the bus?
Through the Chair. That information comes directly when a student boards a bus and our operator hits a key on their fare box. It's a manual process for us at this point. So, the key gets hit, the data is captured, and they move on down the road. So, those numbers come from us.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth, could you expand on how we're getting the word out on the ridership?
Through the President, absolutely. So, I just, I first want to say that Ms. Acton and her team really, really have been great and cooperative partners in this effort. As she mentioned, Dave Whiting is the district point of contact to work the contractual agreement between People Mover and the district. So, once, once the agreement was in place, the communication really worked through the instructional channels down to the school principals, and they're very, actually, they're very eager and happy for this arrangement. So, I think information flow, at least to the student level, works pretty quick and pretty seamlessly, and I think that shows in the ridership increases.
Are there any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for working with us on this and for managing this project. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you for having us.
Okay, next, we have our school zone safety, and
So, I'm going to pass the mic around so we can all introduce ourselves. I am Stephanie Marmillo, I am the Municipal Traffic Engineer for the Municipality of Anchorage.
I'm Shane Locke, I'm with the Municipal Traffic Department, and I work closely with the Anchorage School District Transportation, Student Transportation.
Chris Langley, I'm the manager of the Traffic Safety Division, reporting to Stephanie Marmillo.
Julie Ellison with Risk Management and Safety.
Deborah Engel, Senior Director of Risk Management and Safety for the Anchorage School District.
Are you presenting anything, or?
I guess I'm here in response to some inquiries. I guess there was a question about walkability and the coordination between MOA traffic and ASD on the safe walking routes.
Yeah, so the question was, and you just said it, walkability, coordination between MOA traffic and ASD on safe walking routes to schools. Mirrors and service are apparently been two big ones here recently that I know that I've heard about, and I'm sure their Assembly members have, too.
Right.
So, I might pass the kind of, I'll say my experience. I've been with the municipality for eight years now, and the Safe Routes to School Manual actually existed before I did at the municipality, and on an annual basis, those maps specifically as it relates to the schools are updated. Shane Locke is actually who works directly with the school district, and if there's been any geometric changes, any road changes, any, I mean, really changes with any of the schools or additions, those maps are reevaluated and updated on an annual basis when it comes to the Safe Routes to School Manual. And then, there's obviously additional coordination between the municipality and the school district when it comes to just safety in school zones and students, period. I know the school district gets inquiries, we get inquiries, the Assembly gets inquiries, everything eventually filters to my department, one of us, and we work very closely with the school district and the peers to go out and do evaluations of those specific concerns as they come up.
So, hasn't evaluation been done? I know mirrors, definitely, I've been hearing a lot about, and then we just had a student get hit by a car on their bicycle over at service, so I'm just wondering, have you done any further studies on these areas?
I know that we have recently looked at mirrors, and we are doing evaluations. We met with two specific parents that had inquiries, one that was the parent of a child that got struck while crossing the intersection during, after an after-school program at the intersection of Victor and 100th. And so, we've been collecting counts and doing evaluations, especially with the change of 100th Avenue getting punched through, and looking at the intersection itself, and whether or not those changes warrant overall changes as far as signalization of the intersection, but also evaluating the signage of the school zone itself. And we actually have submitted some changes and improvements in the signage for the school zone that we are going to be having done. Right now, our paint and sign shop is focusing on striping while we have sun and we can stripe, but they are, they work in signage improvements, and it will be completed before the next school year begins, as far as those signage improvements go. I wasn't made aware of the incident at service, but I know that we are working regularly. Service, I don't want to say is more complicated, but it is in the sense that there is a large entity who is not in the room that is also participatory, because Abbott Road is actually owned, maintained, and operated by the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities. So, we work with them as well, and there have been multiple evaluations, especially with the Abbott Road reconstruction that was recently occurring, and with any changes that happened at the school. At this time, there has not been any specific improvements identified for that school zone.
Do we have any other questions? Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, in regards to service, why is there no crosswalk there for students from the neighborhood that's to the immediate south of Service High to access the school?
At this time, there's not because there has not been a single identified location that could be made safe to put a signalized crossing for students to cross. And that's the discussion with the State of Alaska. There are offset tees, so there's, there's no, there's multiple intersections that are neighborhood roads, and trying to identify a single location that actually connects directly to the school from the neighborhood to facilitate a crossing location was not identified without reconstructing a private road or reconstructing the school site itself.
I think that needs to be done. I think there really needs to be a way for the students who attend service, who live immediately to the south of it, to not have to take a bus to school, to be able just to safely cross the street to go to school. I mean, people who live literally one block away can't walk to their school.
Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say I really loved your band on your Apple Watch. Second is, so I work at AK Childen Family, which is right across the street from Service, and it's amazingly dangerous at times when our students and our clients want to go and just ride across the street on their bikes, or just go to the playgrounds at the schools. Whatever we can do with the state, if the state's our barrier, then let us know how we can put pressure, whether it's through our legislators, because I think this is absolutely egregious, that we need to get something done.
Mr. Dyson?
Yeah, I identify with both the last two commenters. We have a situation where there's a very busy commuter road going by, and kids who live literally a block or half or two from school, you know, we're busing them, you know, around and so on. And when we make our case to the Legislature for funding, if we could quantify... And when we make our case to the legislature for funding, if we could quantify what it costs to do transportation things to work around, provide safety for kids because of a suboptimal substructure sort of thing. And it's been my perspective that we, you and us, have to deal with problems that are not of our making, and particularly when they're, you know, it's something within the state's venue, that we need to make a very credible case that we're having to spend money to solve problems not of our making, you know, and so on. So I think that would help equip our respective lobbyists when they're making their case. And Mr. Donley and I can argue sometimes about which one of us is the most cynical about progress, and particularly on money, and I'm not hopeful in the short term, but it's still worth the effort. We need to know.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton.
Thanks.
And he just on the top there.
Sorry I was late. When I was hurrying down Northern Lights, they have a red flashing light that's in the stupidest place. There's no connecting road. It doesn't make sense. Why would it be there? It's some kind of something, I don't know why. Everyone stopped. I didn't see any pedestrians, but everyone stopped, looked, and then proceeded. So it works, and it was in a ridiculous place if you're looking at service, but it worked, okay? But I think what we're talking about here is really a huge cultural thing. We're about, in this country, moving cars fast and a lot of other things, but that's our main cultural paradigm, and we need to change it. And we were chasing car traffic for 50, 60 years, and now we've overshot in many instances. We don't have a safe crossing at Service because the goal there was to move cars fast down Abbott. I was involved with that project for almost 20 years now. That was the goal, and if you can accommodate pedestrians while you're moving cars fast, we'll consider it. But this is really the way it's done. That's the priority, and it needs to change, and we're hearing it here, but we need to be very persistent and vocal about it. And during that 20-year process of planning Abbott Road, school district needed to consistently, every chance they had, said, "Make a crossing, make a crossing, make a crossing." And it would have happened if we had heard from the school district more. From community council, we didn't get any. It was like, we got the nod and the checkbox was marked. But it really needs to be ongoing and persistent, let the kids walk. So we have a couple opportunities. There is a new federal transportation law coming up, and Stephanie would know more, I think in the next couple of years, but it takes them five years to make it. But we need to send letters and say, "Look, we want prioritized, prioritize road projects that give us safer walking," and we start there. DOT is getting better, and my decades of dealing with them, but we need to really hammer, we have other community priorities than moving cars fast. And in AMAS, that's our local share of federal funds, we're reworking the scoring system, and that scoring system needs to rank road projects higher if they give us the opportunity to put pathways on both sides of the roads and provide safe walking access to schools. Right now, the priority, the ranking system we use, double counts, moving cars fast, and then lower down, there's other community goals, okay? And we're flipping that around, hopefully, but we really need to be persistent on this because it will not change. Right now, we're all about moving cars fast.
Ms. Hildy.
I want to thank you for that, and one of our, through the chair, to remember, Weddleton. One of our, I want to tell you the experiences we have in the school district, more than most are the complaints that I get are to bus more kids, not walk more kids. So when you spoke to culture, that is exactly kind of some of the crux of this as well because there's certainly, on any given year, more requests to move, because it's a mile and a half, about a mile, you know, within the school zone, then we start to bus unless it's unsafe. But we have quite a bit more requests for busing because of that presently than we do to not bus. And so culturally, you know, really the, in our community, whether it's health, safety, environment, you know, that's going to be where a lot of the work. Or the opposite is you just cut it off and then go through the, you know, turmoil and then reestablish normalcy or whatever. But therein lies, I think, just on the school district side, from my experience, after 29 years in school districts, it's not just this school district, it's, you know, folks want the rides and everything from, well, moose could be on the road, bears are on the road, you know, my child's unsafe, I want, I mean, just so you know. It's too long to, you know, walk between my house and there. So those are just some of the barriers that we have as well, but it's, you hit the nail on the head with culture.
Ms. Hildy.
I'd like to know what the Assembly needs from the school board if you do move forward with trying to promote walkability. All those concerns are valid, but children walking supports our mission of kids getting their wiggles out before they get to school, they get fresh air, they get sunshine for like two months here. But the concerns that Dr. Bishop shared are real, so I'm okay saying that this is a good health choice for children, and, you know, that's not hard for me to assert to the public, but we need to know if you're going to push for this, how we can support you and do it in a purposeful, sustained way and not just talk about it at this meeting and then we don't do anything.
Is that a question to me or a statement? You know, I'd say anytime there's a road project, the school district should say, "We want a crossing," again and again and again, and keep, and even go in there and say, "And this is what it'll look like, please design this," but really get in the game on that.
Ms. LaFrance.
Thank you, Madam President. So along the lines of what Ms. Hildy was saying and Mr. Weddleton, from a practical, tactical standpoint, is there an existing task force or committee that looks at these issues of walkability? I'm not really sure with whom the action item resides right now for the issue of service and for some other issues that come up. I had some other questions as well about opportunities for collaboration with the public. I know we have someone from Alaska PTA here who's very concerned about these issues, and also even communicating the Safe Routes Manual with parents. How do they find out about that? So I guess those two questions, who owns this action item for service and how do we carry it forward, and how do we explore further opportunities for collaborating and doing what Mr. Weddleton said to try to change the culture and work with the public?
So I will attempt to answer what I can. There, at one time, was a hazardous routes committee that was actually chaired by the school district transportation coordinator, and it contained members from the Municipality of Anchorage Traffic Department, actually, the Municipality of Anchorage Public Works Department, the State of Alaska Traffic and Safety, State of Alaska Street Maintenance and Operations. I actually have, oh, I have it with me. So I had the ASD Director of Transportation, ASD Elementary Supervisor, ASD Demographer, and GIS Manager, the Risk Manager, the Transportation Planner. Then there were PTA representatives, my department, the Police Department, Public Works, State of Alaska, both Road Maintenance and the Traffic Engineer, and it was, it was an actual committee that would meet periodically when specific nominations or requests were made regarding hazardous routes related to school walking, to walking to schools within the boundaries. And that committee would meet, it was chaired by the ASD Transportation Coordinator, and that group would meet periodically when these requests would come through, and there would be a full evaluation by the committee to evaluate those requests. And there's kind of a checklist and evaluation to determine whether or not, you know, is it considered a hazardous route? What are the hazards? Is it because of the speeds? Is it because of the volume? Is it because of lack of lighting? Is it because there is or is not a trail or sidewalk? And there's a whole checklist of evaluation associated with that, and then there really would be kind of that determination of, does the school zone need a reduced speed school zone? Does there need to be a specific crossing made? Does there need to be a crossing guard? And those recommendations. And then it would go through the committee, there would be kind of consensus and determination, and then that would be reported to whoever made the request. And to be fair, that committee has been defunct for quite some time. There has been changes in leadership in many of these groups. And so really, in the past, I'd say, eight years of my time at the municipality, it has been more either we at the municipality get an inquiry, or the school district gets an inquiry, or the State of Alaska gets an inquiry, and then those three groups kind of do a smaller pow-wow and do an evaluation. There hasn't been the formal meeting of this committee. And then as far as like the decision of when it's communicated, it is generally communicated to whoever made the request, and the school district and whoever else was involved is made aware of that. I personally do not know whether or not, you know, that was going to the principal, back to the principal of the school, or the PTA, or anybody else. If they were part of the person who nominated it, then it absolutely was, but I don't know whether or not it was being forwarded or shared otherwise as far as that process. My hope is that that committee can be revived, you know, or at least a process. We've been doing portions of that process, not to say that these things have been being ignored. As far as the service request goes, I don't know who owns that one. We've gotten it from four different people, three different times. Like, you know, I know that it came from the State of Alaska, they reached out to us, I know the school district, we've had concerns and come to us, and because we're not the owner of the road and there was an evaluation with the upgrade of the road and kind of a decision was made at that time, I don't know that there, the question is, are we being asked to reevaluate this again? And if so, then I guess that resides, I can take it upon me to bring it up to the school district and the state again to say, you know, this has been brought up again. Perhaps we need to convene the entire committee to evaluate this.
I'd like to give Mr. Roth an opportunity to state what ASD is doing currently.
So, so thank you, Madam President. So, so if I might, just to talk to this, and I have asked Deb and Julie here for a reason, because in this specific topic of both the Service High School matter as well as mirrors, you know, we have, and they have been on site multiple times with the school principal and meeting with parents on this, and, you know, the meeting that Stephanie references, you know, absolutely, we do have that organization, but I would argue that the focus of that group, when it meets, many times it's about where we cite bus stops, where we route buses through neighborhoods based on choke points, constraints, and safety concerns. It's not necessarily, I mean, it certainly is a topic, it is not necessarily focused on school zone safety. Again, you know, the district has a very keen interest in all things student safety, no doubt about it. But our physical ability to influence the roads is legally constrained. We do not have the purview to do any modifications to either state or city managed streets. So, you know, it is a collaborative interest, and we are absolutely interested in solving this one. But I think we have to kind of put this into perspective. It is a team effort. You know, we know this issue exists, you know, I think, you know, for us as a district, I mean, we certainly have been directly involved in it, but as a driver, I think it really is a governance piece at this point, and Abbott Loop, or Abbott Road specifically, it really is to the state to take action at this point.
Ms. LaFrance, I think you were next.
Actually, I think Ms. Hildy.
No. Nope, okay.
I don't have a...
Ms. Mitchell.
So I really appreciate hearing about that hazardous routes committee, and clearly the ASD should be at the table when these road projects are being designed, at the design phase, because that is when input is gathered from all different parties. So I would very much encourage us re, from the district, if we were the people who dropped the ball, or I don't know, it sounds like it just was, it happened, but I would love to see that resurrected.
I'm going to let Deb, sorry.
I just wanted to echo Mr. Roth's discussion. The Anchorage School District has been absolutely involved in each one of these situations, and anytime we have a concern from a parent or a group, we respond immediately and we connect with the municipality. The municipality and the State of Alaska are the ones that have authority to actually make decisions, but we are there assessing, evaluating, meeting with parents, we always bring the principal, trying to have as much clear communication about it as possible and trying to give our best input to that. And that does involve always the Senior Director of Transportation, routing. We probably, I had no awareness of a committee. I would love to see that reinstituted, but I don't think people should leave with the impression that the school district has remained silent on this. It has been a top priority for us. And again, to Board Member Mitchell's point, the Abbott Road is kind of a done deal at this point, and so it's that problem of getting all the right stakeholders involved early enough to have that input.
And I hope I didn't give the impression, I don't mean to interrupt, but I hope I didn't give the impression that ASD was being silent because we regularly communicate with the school district back and forth.
Not at all. I just, I thought I was hearing that, you know, wanting to understand what our involvement is, and it's active.
Yeah. And it really is, it varies how, anytime a parent, a teacher, a principal, a student, anybody brings a concern to us as a municipality, our very first step honestly is to reach out to the school district, our counterparts at the school district, because we want to make sure that they are also aware that the concern has been brought to us. We don't want to ever, you know, evaluate, move forward, or do anything without having the school district at the table to be a part of that discussion.
Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you. Through the chair. So our policies, we have a policy, 751.3, and it talks about a hazardous, hazardous transportation committee. And so it seems to me that it's just one of those other cultural shifts where we need to go back, because it is really, you know, it's about walking, but it's called the hazardous transportation committee. So we might need to go back and revisit this policy so that we can implement it and include the conversation that we're having today.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson.
Thank you. I really appreciate this conversation and particularly John's point about sort of getting involved early, and I just wanted to speak to your comment. I think that it's probably not appropriate to say it's a done deal. Yeah, that project has happened, but the reason we're talking about it is what we can do to change it. And so I understood your sentiment, but I just want to make sure it was clear that even if something is already done, we can make it better still.
All right. Mrs. Flotell. I know I'm not saying that right.
Thank you. This is more for, really, the administration for the municipality, but the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the housing units, you know, we're trying to bring online. I hope this can be a part of that conversation as we want to bring more housing units online, and that's our goal and our stated goal in the municipality. We really should put kind of some of these ideas at the forefront because we're going to be presuming that those housing units will have children who will want to go to school. So what I'm hearing is very reactive, and that's great, we can fix problems, but the more proactive we can be to build it in, kind of to Mr. Weddleton's point, but as we put our comprehensive plans forward and our land use plans forward, I think it makes sense to be collaborating on that level.
And absolutely, and I will say that most of our plans, policies, and actually the updated Title 21 that has now been in effect for three years, requires installation of sidewalks and trails on both sides of almost every type of road, whereas that was not in the previous version of Title 21. So there were new roads that were being constructed that did not have pedestrian facilities. That will no longer be the case, and there's actually triggers that, depending on the size of the development, if there isn't a sidewalk along that road, that it shall be constructed with that project because it's a large enough impact. So it's not just the plans that are in place, but there's actually code in place to try to ensure that, that that's going to continue to happen and that we will see a more continuous bike and pedestrian infrastructure in this city. And then related to that, I mean, there, every road project that I have been involved with on both the municipality and the states, really our comments generally are, you know, that the requirements are to have a trail on this side, a sidewalk on this side, and moving forward that in the process. Have there been projects where it has been eliminated due to topographic reasons or some other sort of conflict? Absolutely, there have been projects where it's been removed, but it is, I think it's always our intent, both through codes, policies, plans, procedures, to continue to move those things forward.
Mr. Dyson and then Mr. Donley.
We might be actually going to do something.
We might be actually gonna do something useful here. Back in the day, Mr. Donnelly put it in state law. Dave got tired of Department of Transportation coming back for money every few years in the same road. So, Donnelly put it in the law that they've got to build for the 25-year horizon, is that right? And a couple of times, I bitched about that, because I didn't like the Cadillac that was built when a Volkswagen Road would have done. But he's right. And we should consider putting it in both the state law and local, that every time a road is being upgraded and so on, consideration to pedestrian safety, and particularly, school kids has to jump through some hoops to get done. And this is what Mr. Waddleton also said. Whenever any work is gonna get done, this needs to be considered. And all of you are smart enough to know when you put sidewalks or bike paths alongside, those need to be cleared. Where do you put the snow? And once you get it so the grader with the wing on the blade can't get at it, you know, and so on and so forth, and the expense of cleaning the snow off the walkways and stuff, you know, gets significant. How to get the snow off, and whether or not you're gonna have a fence or a guardrail between the highway and the sidewalk, you know, those things absolutely need to be considered. One other thing that drives me crazy is, so DOT built the New Glenn Highway. They put the culvert under it too high, and every year it flooded three or four homes, which was irritating to people there, you know, and their banks, and so on and so forth. So, we fought and fought to get them to lower the darn culvert. Fine, they need to have, be able to keep it thawed. So, they had to run power, you know, hundreds of yards. And I said, wait a minute, you guys are gonna put lighting along that street? Can't you power both the lights and the freeze wire? And they're saying, well, it's a different contract. You know, so they had to have two different contractors digging in the same ditch, trying to keep, cut one another's wire. We need to have those kind of contracts. So, if you all sitting at this table find out the state's gonna do something on a highway, they've already let a contract, we can still go back and say, wait a minute. Timeout here. While you're doing that work, please put the wiring in the ditch and stuff for this permissive traffic control, you know, for the sidewalks and stuff. So, my suggestion is that we jointly work together to enhance what Dave put in the state's laws on these other considerations, and do the same to force the city to do, jump through the same kind of hoops that I'm sure they probably do now anyways. So, respectfully, but hopefully forcefully suggested.
Ms. LaFrance.
I think Mr. Donnelly was ahead of me? No?
Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. What do you call the regulations or the guidelines you use for establishing when a school traffic zone is? You know, with the flashing lights go down to 20 miles an hour? Are those protocols or those guidelines?
It's a policy.
A policy?
It is a policy.
So, my understanding of the current policy for school zones is if it's an existing 25 mile an hour route, road, then you don't have flashing lights and going down to 20 miles an hour zone there, you know?
Generally, yes.
I think that's a mistake. I think that when you're next to an elementary school especially, where there's kids walking across the street, I think that regulation needs to be changed, that policy needs to be changed, so you can have controlled flashing lights and going down to 20 miles an hour when children are present. We've got a road about half a mile from here. There's just a road runs alongside of Bonneface out here, and it's a 20 mile an hour residential road. And yet, next to some of our elementary schools, we have 25 miles an hour. And when the kids are present, it doesn't drop. And I think there's a real significant impact upon drivers of those flashing lights. It alerts them that the children are present. And I think it makes a difference, because we all know that in a regular 25 mile an hour zone, a lot of people drive just normally 30. So, if there's no other trigger to alert them to the presence of children and to the possibility of something more dramatic, fine wise, I don't think you're as likely to regulate their driving habits there. So, I really think you ought to amend that policy to say that when it's, when there's elementary children involved crossing the street next to a school, it should be 20 miles an hour during school crossing hours.
Okay, Ms. LaFrance, and then Ms. Flotell.
Thank you, Madam President. To Mr. Dyson's point for concerning joint action, procedurally speaking, can I make a motion to resurrect the committee? Can we do that here?
Resurrect the ASD committee?
Well, to, and whether it remains an ASD committee or becomes a joint committee concerning hazardous routes?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to resurrect or recreate or create some kind of joint committee to address hazardous routes for students?
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Hazardous committee, in my computer, it looks like I got old policy. So, I'm not sure whether it's even still in our policy, but this will give us an opportunity to clarify. So, I'm not sure, once upon a time, there was that committee in our policy. I'm not finding it now, unless somebody else found it.
Well, we certainly have a governance committee meeting coming up on Monday. So, Mr. Holland, maybe you could research that for our meeting, kind of, and have to take a look if there's still a policy on that, and if we need to change it based on the recommendation for a joint committee. Mr. Waddleton.
And I would recommend changing it from hazardous route to school to walking opportunity committee.
I would second Mr. Waddleton's amendment.
So...
Safe walking?
Safe walking, there you go. Yeah, and biking. Ms. Mitchell.
I would just encourage us to think beyond just walking, because, you know, we've had a lot of bike incidents too. I believe there was a serious injury at Polaris too, at the Diamond Roundabout in the last couple of years.
I guess the original, I don't know, it was called the hazardous transportation committee. We could always call it, whether we call it, a school safety transportation committee. I mean, that's, we're getting down into the weeds now. If I have one opportunity, my, Chris reminded me that there was one unanswered question that Ms. LaFrance had regarding how the Safe Routes to School manual gets communicated to people. To be fair, I don't know exactly how that has happened in the past. We have, we have a site on our website that has the entire manual and individual links to all of the different maps for the different schools. I believe there is a link from the school district's website to that as well. We are actually working on, because this has been brought up to us regularly, and we've had a number of meetings with individual principals and people from schools that were not aware those maps were available, that we have, I have a couple with me. We've printed up, I think, 24 by 36 or 36 by 48 inch maps that are laminated that we plan on delivering to each individual school, so they can have it posted in the school itself. And we're really hoping that we can somehow work with transportation. Our folks are at the, at the school district to make sure that it is being communicated out to all of the parents of all the students, that that map is available, at least they're aware of it, you know? Because if there are concerns or they have any questions about those maps, that could come up and part of this review and evaluation by this committee, because there have been certain areas that have been determined to be hazardous routes and are not recommended for students to cross, you know? So, I mean, that's part of the discussion and part of these evaluations. So, thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions? Since we can't take an official vote, we can do a straw vote. So, I guess I would just, maybe a show of hands of those that would like to reinstate the committee? Yes, Mr. Waddleton, you have to be on it. Okay. Well, definitely, we have our governance meeting on Monday. We can talk about our policy, and maybe we can get our staff to meet with you and talk about how we can restart that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on, there were some more questions by the Assembly, and we have some updates through ASD, and I'm...
Were we gonna do the school zone safety on them sharing about clearing around schools for the routes to school on, you know, like needles and some of the things that we've been hearing reported?
Right, we didn't, that was, you want to go ahead and expand on that, Ms. Hildy?
I'd be happy to.
Yes.
So, I mean, over the course of the year, I've just heard principals sharing these terrible, these stories of going out and finding needles on playgrounds, and that's kind of our responsibility, if it's right there. But beyond that, just on the perimeter of our schools, that's still present there, right? Just on the other side of the fence. So, sometimes, it'll be something as simple as branches sticking through the fence and that could poke the kids. But certainly, there's ones where they wanted it cleared, because there's a homeless camp just, you know, another 20 feet past. So, my concern is that our principals, one, that gets resolved before our principals have to deal with it. But is that something the Assembly has as a priority? What are you doing to make sure the path to school is not just walkable, but safe, clear from, clear from paraphernalia, clear from, you know, not all homeless people are dangerous, but if there's a dangerous encampment, you know, those priorities. I want kids to be able to walk to school safely and feel safe, and our principals not be spending their time doing that.
Ms. Flotell.
Thank you. I appreciate the concern. We had one specific camp reported within the range of a school. It was not within the, there is an ordinance. If it is within a certain number of feet of the school, it is automatically eligible for a 72-hour cleanup. The one near the school was not that close. It is a public safety evaluation done by APD and the CAP team. There's a variety of factors. I very much appreciate, you know, the litter and the needles. And those are things that we'll be having a further conversation at, at our Committee on Homelessness meeting this coming Wednesday. We're working on those strategies to mitigate immediate effects. But we can only, the administration can only notice, abate, and clean a camp when there's shelter. It's very complex. What I would encourage, and what I encourage everyone to do, is to make sure, regardless of how user-friendly it is, to use the GIS system and report the trash and the camps, because that data goes in, and it helps prioritize cleanup for the administration. And then, also with the community council, community police overlay happening, so police patrols are now assigned per community council or a few. If there's a camp or an area in a neighborhood that just doesn't feel right, particularly to those who know it best, we need to get that data into APD. And the best way to do that is 311 or online police reports, so it can go down to patrol. So, we do have some tools. None of them are immediate.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think that the legislature will be able to solve that problem in no time. If you saw the letter, they think it's, the homeless problem is something that'll be easily solved. And so, I think they'll probably have that handled in the next 15 or 20 minutes. Thank you.
Ms. Hildy.
You know, I appreciate the complexity of the problem, but if we are gonna have priorities, my push will always be that the route children are taking to school or that's gonna be around kids is an automatic priority. I don't know if there's court precedent that puts it at 72 hours for that priority, but if there's a way to lower it. If there's something dangerous around a school, I think as a community, we can say we want that gone as our first priority. So, I'll just encourage you to look at ways to make that safer.
Mr. Conson.
The answer to that question is, if you have a public safety problem, you need to call either 911 or 311, because if there is a clear and present problem, they will respond. In a general sense, if it's policy-driven, they're gonna respond under the law. And so, it's up to your principals to identify those locations and contact the proper authorities as soon as they notice, because it all gets queued up and it happens in an orderly manner. And so, the answer is, within any other situation where you have an active crime situation going on, is please call to the proper authorities.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll move on with Dr. Bishop's update.
Thank you, Madam President. I've requested Tom Roth, our Chief Operating Officer, as well as Jim Anderson, the Chief Financial Officer, if you haven't met them before, that's why I officially said their title as well. Since the agenda was set, we've had several emailed questions come in about, hey, can I just have an update about this? So, what we've done is just to provide kind of a dialogue sense of updating instead of a formal report, as well as a written documentation that you can reference or come back. So, we'll just move through these, if that's okay. And the first one, we've taken into care of walkability, of course, that was a major item. But then, question two was the budget cycle in regard to having the fiscal years of the municipality change, or have the district align with that. Government in Alaska has a year, the traditional calendar year fiscal, and school districts in Alaska have July 1 to June 30. And so, we did look into that. I'll turn it over to Jim.
So, the fiscal year for all of the school districts is expressed in state statute. And they do that for a lot of reasons. One is the current discussion on forward funding of education, which has been in the news. It would require the state to partially fund a portion of the year outside their fiscal year, or go a year and a half back in order to carry over two different fiscal years. And so, for lots of reasons, the state had all 53 school districts follow their fiscal year. The other things that resulted as a part of that is the state deed has to do annual reports every year. They have to use the audited CAFERS, the annual finance reviews. And that's really why they set their timelines for when all the districts have to turn in CAFERS, because they use that data to build all of the state reports in order to submit to the federal government. Everything for disparity tests, through title funding, through all the other major grants. All of those are based off audited financial numbers as well as membership data. So, it really doesn't appear that there's any way to unilaterally pick one district based off their local municipality and change that district's fiscal year. It really would be a broader discussion at Juno, which I think is sort of already happening with the potential to have multi-year funding or not. It doesn't appear it's something that we could solve internally.
I would like to add, however, that the second largest, the borough that runs the second largest school district is also interested in this, and have, they have contacted us. So, we know that there is a grassroots effort to try to figure this out. And really, the goal was to not have uncertainty to where the stability of employees would be affected by reduction in force or RIF or pink slips. That was the corpus of the question by the borough as well. It was really in regard to more stability of the workforce. And if there are additional questions, we can answer those. But this next one just kind of continues, it's really an upquake, an earthquake, an earthquake, an update on the earthquake, an upshot of the earthquake update. And just talking about damage repairs, progress we've made, our budget, and also the Mountain View Playground. So, I'm gonna turn that over to Tom Roth and for the discussion.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, through the President. So, if I can, I just, I'll first start with the Mountain View Elementary School Playground. For those who are not aware, last year about this time, we did have a playground fire that consumed about one-third of a portion of the playground at the school. There was a community fundraising effort in the Mountain View area. The, in short, the equipment is en route to Alaska, it's traveling by sea. The site at the school is effectively prepared to receive. So, as soon as we get the equipment, it'll be installed. So, it will be available for the upcoming academic year. So, if I might then transition over to where we stand on earthquake recovery. And my purpose really is to provide a snapshot picture of where we stand. really is to provide a snapshot, picture of where we are as a district. Some of it will be kind of a wave top. We are happy to dive into any topic, though, that Assembly or Board members want to talk through. I've asked Mr. George Vicalis to join me. George is a consultant to the district. He is also the person I've asked to assist in the integration of multiple departments working this FEMA and State of Alaska Department of Homeland Security potential recovery of cost effort, so George is prepared to discuss, you know, our continued interaction with FEMA and the State DHS. So I'm going to kind of break this down into three subject areas. The first is I'm going to talk where we stand in terms of the recovery of district property following the earthquake. From there, there was a specific question about Eagle River Elementary School and Greening Middle School, and I'll spend some time talking through those schools specifically. They were the two schools that were damaged during the earthquake to a point that they are not considered or evaluated to be safe for continued use. And then lastly, we'll transition to where we stand with this FEMA process. So again, starting with the recovery operations, by way of background, after the earthquake, we had about 10 days after the earthquake where we did an emergency process, where we did really kind of a rapid visual assessment of all of our buildings, and with our partners, our contract partners in the community, we performed a number of repairs throughout the district to get the schools back online. From that, we had identified 15 schools that had more damages or more expensive damages. For those schools, the district did contract with local architectural engineering firms to do more detailed structural assessments, and I'll come back to that here momentarily. So when we talk about repairs, there are really kind of two categories. The first is what I'll call these 15 schools where we did the program analysis reviews, where the repairs are going to be a bit more involved. They're going to involve engineer design work prior to the construction. The other efforts that are ongoing are really more aesthetic improvements, repairs to school buildings, where we're talking about cracks in drywall, painting, cleaning carpets, replacing floors, those kinds of things that generally speaking don't require an engineered solution. So that, those repairs are ongoing. So again, coming back to the 15 par schools, again, Eagle River and Greening were the two schools that really topped the list in terms of the prioritization for completion of those assessments because they are out of line. So we have assigned as a district, you know, these schools have project managers assigned to them, where we stand with these in terms of progress. So because they do require engineered repairs, right now Eagle River Elementary School and Greening Middle School both have contracts with architectural firms. As a part of the project analysis review, what we did get back from the architects, so the projected cost to repair the earthquake damage to increase the seismic performance of both Eagle River Elementary and Greening, and then both these schools are in need of roof replacement. Eagle River Elementary had a project on the previous bond that was passed earlier this year. Greening, Greening has not, but again, Greening was a school that was identified with this deficiency. So to summarize, Eagle River Elementary School, the projected cost to do all those things is 12.1 million with a projected timeline to complete both the design and the repairs of 24 months, so these schools would be available right now as truth as we know it, starting in the 2021-2022 academic year. Greening, the projected rough order of magnitude cost is sitting at about 23.3 million, again on the same 24-month projected timeline. So I'll pause if there are any questions on any of that information.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Peterson and then Mr. Dyson.
Thank you, Madam President. And so the Greening Middle School, do we know what the cost for a total rebuild would be or an estimate?
Through the President. We did receive, because of the extended damage, we did ask the A&E firm to look at what would it cost to both to rubble the existing building and to build a new school. And I've got Mr. Fennessey, maybe, I don't have that number in front of me. Tom, do you recall what that number was?
Seventy-six million dollars.
Seventy-six million dollars to demolish, remove the old and then to replace the new.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dyson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. So we have some underutilized schools, particularly the elementary schools in the Eagle River area, and I assume that you've gone through a process of saying, is it worth spending what, $90 million or whatever it is from these two schools, given the fact we have surplus capacity in the area? Is that true?
Through the President, to member Dyson, absolutely. I mean, we do look at this, but I would tell you, sir, that if you look at the current enrollment in those schools right now, they're packed. They are frankly packed, and if there is a shortage or if there's a underutilization, I would argue that, you know, one, it doesn't exist now, and even with Eagle River brought back online, there may be some boundary adjustments, but as a geographic area, Eagle River is actually, the enrollments are pretty high in the collective.
Well, I'm glad to be wrong and thank you.
And also I'd just like to add, not sure if the Assembly knew, but we did take Eagle River Elementary and then did place it in four other schools, and in doing so, I believe two of those schools needed portables to be added, relocatables to the building. I believe Fire Lake was one of those, that has the optional program for classrooms. Some classrooms went to Ravenwood and portable, two portables went to Ravenwood.
And one to Homestead.
And then one to Homestead, and some of the students went to Homestead, and then I think Birchwood was the only one that did not receive additional relocatables to house the programs. And again, the difference really are the spaces for some of the usable space for special services classrooms. That's changed a lot since the time of building these buildings to the services by law offered now.
If I may, may I respond, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Dyson. And then Mrs. Kennedy.
Not to be contrarian or disrespectful, but even a dozen portables doesn't begin to offset the room for, the room spaces available in two fairly large schools. And as I remember, Eagle River High School is not fully utilized as well.
It's pretty tight.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've got to live for two years with a dozen portables, you know, and two big schools coming back online, you know, we will, we're going to be doing a responsible job with utilization of space.
Well, I do think as Board President too, the things that I have heard is that, given the municipality's projection of growth also, that even though those enrollment might be low now, that there is definitely a projection that they will increase over the next couple of years, and if you take a school offline, then you're going to be looking at, so we're looking at projections provided by the municipality as moving forward and thinking of how we allocate these schools also.
Yeah, and if I may follow up, and you should, and we should, and indeed with strategic location of Elmandorf, you know, in the North Pacific and what it looks like DoD will be doing, you know, that could be a very significant bump in our population, particularly in the Chugiac Eagle River area. But thank you for your response. I'm sure that you were doing a careful and thoughtful job of analyzing all that.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are a lot of conversations still going on in the Chugiac Eagle River area about this kind of a quandary, I think, that we're in, really understanding that for the most part, the students that we have right now kind of fit in the facilities that we have, and yes, there are, you know, the need for a few, for some portables and that, but there's really a question, kind of like what Mr. Dyson is getting at, is to what extent do we really go and build these two bigger schools, mostly because, you know, 15 years ago when we had the projections that we did for the population out there, those never materialized, and so we were at that point on a trend line that was just kind of overwhelming. So now the real question is, if you really are seeing something that indicates that those students are going to come back, that we're going to have those numbers, and, you know, certainly things cycle through, you know, everybody's lived in a neighborhood where all of a sudden you just had kids everywhere, and then all of a sudden they're all grown up, and then they, you know, so that's really kind of, I think, what Chugiac Eagle River people are struggling with right now. So I don't think there would really be any adverse reaction to continuing to go down the track of building, rebuilding the schools, but there are a couple of other things to consider, and one was certainly the willingness of a clutena to continue to provide those two properties, and the other one was the idea that Greening maybe is not really built in a really great place, and I know you've had some soil testings done that say, you know, it's not a soils issue, but at the same time, I've heard some engineers say, yes, it was soils, you know, that was causing the problem. So I guess my question would be, that might be a good one for Mr. Vicalis then, you know, really what is going on with that property in Greening, and how sure are we that that's a good place to rebuild a middle school? And then my next question would be, just in terms of kind of a general thought about funding at this point, and whether or not you would go ahead and try to bond for this and then just hope that FEMA puts money into it at some point, or are we going to wait and see what FEMA actually does? So, thank you.
Mr. Roth, would you like to?
So through the President, to member Kennedy, just a couple of things, and I'll try to capture stuff, and I will ask George to comment with regards to his historical knowledge of Greening and the construction that happened in the mid-'80s and some of the concerns about the ground. So with regards to the demographics, to somewhat reiterate what the Board President talked to, so a lot of our information is driven by the long-range planners in the municipality who have identified that the real growth potential for the municipality of Anchorage really is pushing north in this gap between Eagle River, Chugiac, going towards the valley. And if you look at just Powder Reserve as an example where that development is going into, Eagle River Elementary is, or Eagle River High School really is at optimal capacity, Chugiac is not, but where those kids, where those homes go, all those kids really are boundaried into what will be Chugiac High School in Mirror Lake, so I think in time, and Alaska is always a boom or bust state, but right now, I think if you look at some of the economic reports, you know, we've seen improvements over seven months in terms of employment in the state, albeit not huge numbers, I think that's an indicator. So the long-range planners, bottom line, opine that Eagle River-Chugiac need two middle schools and two high schools. So that is really what I think is driving the intent to retain Greening as an activity. And Greening, prior to the earthquake, I think the enrollment was really about 85-plus percent, so Greening itself, there is a population demand. So that's, that again is some of the logic behind retaining and recommending that Greening be kept and repaired. As far as seismic, we are cognizant of a lot of issues that arose during the original construction of Greening back in around 1985, 1986. In terms of the earthquake damage in this last incident, the one area of concern that we do have, there is a stairwell on the east side of the building adjacent, it really connects the gymnasium to the outside, that there are indications that that stairwell may have separated from the building, we think that could be a result of some potential slump in the soil. So we have tasked the engineers that are doing the design to do a much more detailed evaluation, in fact, we've got FEMA supporting this by bringing up a team to do a borehole site example of the soils, and if they need remediation before any effort is done, to repair that compromised structure that the geotech situation is fixed. George, you want to elaborate on that?
First of all, just to make one minor correction, FEMA did send a team up here, but basically just to validate whether or not there should be concerns about the soils adjacent to and under Greening Middle School, and so that was their input. We already did have a study that was quasi-done based on records at the time that the school was built to see if in fact the ground was prepared properly for the school site. The records indicate that it was, however, as Mr. Roth pointed out, there was definitely an obvious failure under one of the major staircases. However, there was also a failure in one of the exterior walls. As a result of that, as part of this evaluation that's being done, there is in fact a contractor that's been hired to come onboard and do a detailed analysis. Now, what type of device, whether it's going to be boreholes or whether it'll be ground penetrating radar or the both to validate the ground soils, that will be up to the contractor to determine, as long as a final determination is made on the soils. In that regard, FEMA has also supported our efforts to take a real holistic look at Greening pending the outcome of this particular evaluation that we're talking about, because it could be, if in fact that particular ground is not stable and is determined to be such, and the cost would be pretty substantial to stabilize it, then that could put that building into the arena of a possible rebuild completely, a new facility. But that's a FEMA determination and it's basically based on costs and an analysis of those costs. But as of right now, it doesn't meet that threshold, so repair is the right answer. The one thing that could possibly change that, of course, is what the ground looks like once the analysis is done. Does that answer your question?
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Yes, actually, that's quite enlightening. So is it fair to say then that we think the best answer right now is to repair, but that, as you said, could change? So we need to, we're kind of on hold then, waiting for that information?
And if I might, just, it's probably a pretty good time to segue into some of the FEMA discussion. So what we are finding, as we get into more detailed evaluations of schools, and, you know, we've done very detailed assessments, but as we've got into the summer construction period, we've gone into a couple of schools, West High School, Bay Shore are two examples where we found additional damages that are clearly linked to the earthquake. So we think this is going to be ongoing over time, that we have this, you know, some of these discoveries down the road. So with regards to FEMA, we had our initial scoping meeting on the 17th of April, and we have 60 days from that point to submit all of our damage inventory sheet, so we are in fact planning to submit those today. We reached our 60-day timeline, and I'm happy to say we're actually very far along in the process. We have been involved in joint inspections with both FEMA and the State of Alaska Department of Homeland Security now going on for what, George, better part of a month, month and a half?
Yes.
So the way the process works is that we as a district provide information to both the state and FEMA, and it's incumbent on them to have teams come out and verify, validate what the district is claiming are damages that are resultant from the earthquake. Once we have concurrence on that, they send it down to a consolidation site in Sacramento and they make a determination on, you know, what is in fact eligible for reimbursement. and they make a determination on, you know, what is in fact eligible for reimbursement. So we, we are very far along in that process. We, we are going to finish the 15 par schools that I mentioned earlier, the ones that had the most damages. You know, we expect to have those, those inspections complete next week. One of the things that, that we were able to do, because of the detailed work that was done by both maintenance and capital planning, instead of going through every gig, which, which they generally do, they have allowed us to do a spot check of, of school buildings by category. So it's, in short, it's going a lot quicker than what could be a years-long process. We think it's going to be quite a bit shorter than that. So where we are in terms of the submission, submission process for, for recovery of funds. So FEMA has multiple categories of submissions. Categories A and B are probably the, the most time expedient. A, category A deals with debris removal. Category B is more emergency repairs done, done to buildings to get them safer occupation and use. So the district has completed submission of category A as of last Friday. We are working on category B. We think, we, we have, as of about two weeks ago, we, we are about 8.3 million spent. We think of that 8.3 million within these two categories, but we'll see about 7.4 million come back. And of, of that 7.4 million, the significance of category A and category B, they do not require the, the district to obtain and maintain insurance. And that will become more of a rub as we look at what's called category E for equipment and facility repair, where there is a requirement, if, if a claimant takes federal monies, that there is an obligation to obtain and maintain insurance. So there are a couple of aspects to that, that could mitigate the cost. There, there is the potential that we could seek a waiver from the Commissioner of Insurance at the state level on that requirement. But again, the risk being if you don't insure the property after you take federal money, that the potential is that if there is another need in the future, that they won't reimburse you for it twice. So, George, I'll, I'll pass to you. If there's anything else you want to elaborate, and again, we're always prepared to take any questions or comments.
Thank you. No, I think, I think you summed it up pretty well. I, I will say this, though, that kudos to the district, and they're receiving it all the time from outsiders from all over the United States, FEMA inspectors, as well as leadership, for the detailed analysis that they did on the schools. And, and I really do want to elaborate on something, just so that you understand what the district was able to accomplish. The bottom line is that the requirement exists from FEMA to do 100% validation inspection of all sites claimed for damage, in all categories of damage. And the value of what they agreed to for the district has saved many, many hours. For example, just to go through an evaluation with the FEMA, the state folks, as well as the district folks for validation, prior to this new procedure being allowed, it was taking anywheres from a full day for an elementary school, to a day and a half to two days for a high school, just to do the evaluation inspection by FEMA. Because of the accuracy of the data that was provided by the district, and its folks, and the updates, to make sure that we captured everything, FEMA has agreed to do a 20% spot check. And if the spot check proves accurate, which it has so far, and we've done a number of schools now, that has substantially cut down the full day, or day and a half to two days, to anywheres from two to six hours for entire school. The benefit of that, of course, is that we'll know sooner as to exactly what FEMA believes to be true, and what FEMA may authorize for reimbursement. And I think that's important. The sooner the better that you know, especially when there are some hard decisions that the district's going to have to make in the future on some of these facilities.
If there's no other questions, we are running a little short on time, and we do have more to cover. So thank you, Mr. Vekalis, and Mr. Roth, and Mr. Anderson.
I believe we still have, in regard to vaping, and the, the answer is yes, we have seen an, an increase. One of the troubles we have, however, and there's some documentation, our secondary folks put this together, is that our, because it's new, our policy didn't keep up with the market, if you will. And so we haven't, it's, we have to call each school to separate tobacco from cigarettes or cigars from tobacco on vaping, or nicotine from vaping. So we have an AR ready to start separating and change our, write a new script for our documentation program at each school that feeds into our main, you know, system, to cap, to actually capture what was vaping and what were those consequences. Right now, they're all under tobacco. That's the provision we used. And so it explains our process here. But anecdotally, our principals, at the end of the year, have a sack full of little things that look like thumb drives. So it is extensive, and there's some ideas, just again, that cooperative work, whether it's with, you know, the healthy walking to school, safe schools, just messages that we could put out together in regard to youth and addiction to nicotine. These are entry-level. We know that, you know, adults don't really like green apple and bubble gum stuff. So we, we know that they have been marketed for children to have future users. So, but just some ideas there. But that was a great question. The short answer is yes, and there's some additional information there.
Mr. Wellington?
So we're looking at a Tobacco 21 ordinance right now, and the, I think, anti-smoking advocates are saying, oh, there should be no sanctions against underage smokers or vapers. And, but then what I'm hearing from you, in my intuitive sense, is that there should be something. If your smoke gets 50 bucks, I'm giving you a fine. And so, so when you say community consequence, that's what you're saying, there should be some kind of?
Correct. And to make it clear, there's consequences in schools for that as well. So it would be uniform if there were both. I mean, students, I mean, there's no monetary fine, but depending on, and it's written in here, a first offense, second offense, third offense, there's certainly progressive discipline in regard to vaping tobacco use on campuses. We are tobacco-free.
Okay.
There was another question in regard to school surplus, school repairs. I think we took a, already answered the school repairs. We do have information in regard to surplus and Mount Spur and the use of that equipment. We did close down Mount Spur. We want to share with the Assembly that the Western demographics study that we had, that lasted, you know, over a year, did determine some areas for space usage. And I wanted to share some of the work that we've done in the three years since, that we've had. Number one, Mount Illiamna was, so we have closed down Mount Illiamna, and rezoned students to four different elementary schools. Mount Spur is being rezoned primarily to two elementary schools on base, and there were full choice in that matter, because those two schools are very close to each other, right around the corner, that the students would go to, and it landed 50-50. So parents, you know, selected those. We also moved Crossroads, which was in a rented space, for a near year now, it's been in Benny Benson. So it's a program within a school rather than a separate rented space. And next year, Central will open up with Padaya inside, that has over 250 students now. The district's first district-run homeschool has grown from, I believe we, from about 109 in a year to 254. And that is going to be rezoned into a school, really to support and offer more dual sides, so that if you want to take a band from the middle school, you can, if you want to take a core class, and so they offer more blended learning. And that, you'll see, if you drive around down your area and you cross Central, you'll see some really upgrades that the Board supported through our fund balance in regard to aesthetics, but also safety and, and maintenance of the area. There'll be a separate entrance. The entrance, I believe, on Debar, 15th, is going to be separate. You'll see a separate sign, so that's what that's about. So we have made those changes, as well as moving in. Probably mid-year, we'll have some courses from Avail being offered at Benson Secondary. So we have made some significant moves. Anyone that knows, whether you, you've experienced in shutting down things and changing things, it's, it's a big move for our community. But those are the things that we've done in response to our study.
Ms. Dunne?
Thank you. I applaud the district on its closing of Mount Illiamna and integrating those students into four other schools. I would highly recommend the district look at Whaley for similar opportunities, both for the integration opportunities for students with disabilities, and mainstreaming those students based on the success you did have at Mount Illiamna. And it could be a significant, potentially significant cost savings as well.
Thank you. And I think the la, the last question was, maybe we have some information on teacher retention?
Thank you, Madam President. There was a, a question in regard to retention, and especially in the market that we have right now. Really, we did not experience, we're still calculating, folks have till June 30th to notify us. They do, they, we haven't experienced an uptick in our trend of retirements. There's some data on the last six years. There's major uncertainty. I believe that our, we do have some folks changing jobs, because we're on the road system, we're able to fill jobs. So we're not very short, except for in the same types of categories, such as special education and occupational therapy, speech therapy. So jobs that are hard to fill nationally, we experience. I think this question, there's some history about that. We're working on a, a mentoring and a retention program with our AEA, our teachers' union, and 50% of our new people, brand new, do sometimes choose after two years to leave. And so it wasn't 50% of our teaching staff, it was 50% of people, I believe, in the, the first few years. So some misinformation went out in the media, on the news, when they did a story, and so that question may have come, so we explained that a little bit. However, the, as we know, the more uncertainty, the more it is kind of an impetus for people to make home choices and family choices. We haven't seen a significant change, but quite a bit of uneasiness as well.
So I think the next question was on, and we're-
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, Madam President. And so my question is, what is the effect of the accreditation at UAA being taken away? How is that going to affect your recruitment for, for teachers? If you, I mean, and they, they have a shortage of teachers in the lower 48, I've been told. So it's probably more hard, more difficult to, to get them to, to want to move up here. So what's the plan?
I'm, I'm just going to share, I was a regent for the University of Alaska system. And it, while it breaks my heart that UAA doesn't have their full accredited program, students in our area will never need to leave. The university system is set up in a way that, that administration technically is being run out of Fairbanks, but courses will be here. Presently, that, the UA system nursing program resides in UAA. They own the program, which means they own the administration, and they get to hire and fire all the teachers or the tenured folks. You know, they determine everything. However, you can go the whole entire time in Fairbanks, and never leave Fairbanks, and still receive your certification in nursing. It's just coming from UAA. So you can graduate UAF, but the, the certification is from UAA. That's going to remain the same here. It's, the biggest is the turmoil and, and transition of, of people presently in the system, because there are some programs for which UAF does not have accreditation either, which is in the music. And so there are certain areas for which we are looking, you know, for recruitment in other places. But we do see that if our employees and, or even our student teachers and folks that want to remain here, they can remain here. And presently, we're working on a, a program for which high school kids can start their undergrad work, their freshman sophomore years, and then transition right into the teaching program. We're working with the UA system. It will be located in Anchorage. It's just, we're having to work with administration from up north. So I, I don't want to say that it's going to be as critical, it saddens me, but there is a pathway to be able to have our students choose education here at home in Anchorage.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to question number seven, and that was, are there any other avenues besides the general fund in which MOA can assist ASD with funding on resources?
Madam President, we did respond to that. That was a question from last time, and Member Dyson supported local control and local support for our schools. And we did clarify that in regard to the funds for which the municipality can add additional funding. It is not allowed in the operational funds. However, there are three other funds for which some of our operational money supports as well, so that can be offset. And the, the district did support funding at the state level and, and education support. The question was, was there, what is that called, a resolution? We did. And then, but if there's a specific area for which the municipality would like to, whether it's in the nutrition fund, capital projects, or transportation, I'm sure our Board would consider a specific support for that municipality fund. And Mr. Dyson, I'll let you chat about it, since it originated at our last meeting.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm hoping the state's legislature's research guys will look at what, if anything, we can do without upsetting the federal grant. And I appreciate it. And, but all my efforts here are saying, you know, the city and the school district have significant financial problems. The easy solutions are not available. If we all choose to say to the citizens, do you want to raise the tax cap and tax yourself more to support schools in this case, put that on the ballot. But I would suggest that if that's what we want to do schools, the initiative come from you all, and say, you know, and I suspect that the Assembly will agree to put it on the ballot. But this exercise, everybody wants to spend more money on schools, you want to open up your wallet, and so on. So that information is useful. But it'd be my perspective, it's the Board's, School Board's decision how to go forward.
Okay, there's no other, oh.
Just, Madam President, the last question is addressed. There was a question in regard to the very first day of school last year. We experienced sexual harassment and hazing at a school, very public, in regard to a football team. There was a question in regard to the charges and have, and students, you know, consequences, school consequences were given. However, we did, there was a question about it, so we called again, and been updated, and it looks to be June 26. Of course, the formal charges against the students wouldn't be released because they're youth. Thank you. That concludes the updates for which the Assembly and Board have requested.
Okay, great. So at this time, is there any comments from Board members or Assembly members? Mr. Holloman?
Yes, something I wanted to bring forward, that was really an idea of mine before I got on the School Board. It's not something the School Board has acted on. It is something the Assembly or the city would have to act on. But some years back, and I'm trying to remember the exact date, but the, during a budget cut, the district dropped swimming as a PE class, as an elective, due to the fact that it was the most expensive class we taught. We have to rent the pool space from the city. That made the annual cost of it quite high. And as a way to, to save money, we, I shouldn't say we at the time, I was, I was teaching in the district, but I wasn't on the Board. It was dropped. In another role, I, I had the opportunity to ask candidates for the Assembly and Mayor questions at a candidate forum. And a question I inserted, because I was in charge, was if the district were to try to bring back swimming as an elective, would you support the muni providing pools to the district at no additional charge? And everybody always supported it when they were a candidate. I've got the mayor on video saying it, although he- I've got the mayor on video saying it, although his memory seems fuzzy right at the moment. And a number of people have come on the Assembly and left in that time, so I'm not sure if I have a majority of people on video anymore. But it's an idea I wanted to bring back forward, and I have to admit, I kind of dropped the ball on it for a couple of years, primarily because we're in the summer season again. We're not teaching our kids to swim. I mean, that's really the heart of it. And ASD is in a position to provide instructors. They're in a position to manage the program, but the cost of pool rental is very high. The city does have the pools. They're there. They're staffed, although I recognize there would be a cost to the city to do this. It's not, it's not free by any means. But I think the city has invested interest in our kids learning how to swim. I kept mentioning it to different principals, and they all seemed slightly interested, but no one ever actually followed up on it until I ran into Mr. Hauser, who I think swims every afternoon when he comes. Mornings. But he was a real enthusiastic supporter, put it in the schedule to see if kids would sign up. And it is currently on the schedule, was kids enrolled at service for the fall if we can, can work out something to make the pool space available. So, I wanted to bring this as an idea to Assembly members to consider, and if they had questions about how it would work, or the things that Mr. Hauser's found out when he approached the pool management about it. It's, it's something I, I see as a cooperative effort between the municipality and the district, and we're working on those on several levels. I'm hoping we can find a way to make this happen at least one school in the fall, with the possibility of it happening at the other schools that are located near swimming pools in subsequent years.
Mr. Dyson.
I agree. We have one of the highest drowning rates of any state in the nation. I sat on the safety council for a number of years. You know, we have difficult conditions, but teaching people to swim is huge, and it is a larger issue. And I certainly would support it. Glad to take some initiative on it. One last thing on a different subject. I suggested that we work together to put in state law when they do any work on roads, pedestrian, non-motorized traffic, safety issues, we take it into consideration. Nobody responded, but I assume that there's nobody against it, and I'm going to continue. I've raised a lot of teenagers. I'm used to being ignored. But I'm going to work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Holloman.
I did have one real quick follow-up comment. We're overwhelmingly talking about low-income kids. My kid knows how to swim, and a whole lot of kids from families who it means, make sure their kids learn it, or they go on vacations in places where kids learn it. But for a large portion of our kids that don't take vacations to warm places, whose parents don't swim or don't make trips to the pool or a beach, this is a huge thing for them. They will never learn this unless we teach them in K-12.
Ms. LaFrance.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Having been the recipient of swimming programs growing up in the valley, I'm fully in support. Do you have any idea how much, how many hours of pool time initially we'd be looking at?
Yeah. Frank Hauser, Principal at Service High School. Right now, when we're looking at scheduling it for next year, we actually created one period, six period. This helps line up with, right now, some classes that are taking place for our life skills program, which is fifth period at the pools. So, we put the class in sixth period, one hour a day, five days a week, for the entire school year. We also, like I said, put it on the schedule, and we had 90 students that expressed an interest and put it on their request as an elective for next school year. So, that's first and second semester. Obviously, we're not going to be able to footput all 90 students in both of those semesters just because we have one teacher for that. So, already, starting out, we're probably going to have to turn students away. So, I'm excited about the opportunity. Students are excited about it. I've had parents and students, since I've been at Service High School, asking about it, and I'm really looking forward to offering it. But it's something I think students are really going to like.
Perez Vadia.
A question about, just in general, about charging for pool use. Life skills classes, use the pool, you're also charged for that as well by the municipality organizations. And I know that Special Olympics has a fairly large presence in your school. They're, they're charged also as a, as a nonprofit for use of the pool. That's, so it's, there are currently no waiving of fees for schools that you're aware of or for programs? Okay, thanks.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I hope the municipality will act on that for us, and I look forward to hearing back from you. So, thank you, Mr. Hauser. Are there any other comments? If not, we have a short period where we invite the public if they have any comments. Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
And I apologize for not raising this earlier, but in terms of ways that the municipality can support the district, I don't know if this is an option, but I am hearing from many of my principals that they really could use social workers in our schools. There are so many issues that our students are dealing with, and if there were someone in the school who could help, you know, understand the services available and help route students to a community, a group, you know, an agency that could help support them, it's not something I've talked about internally. But I wonder if that is an area that the municipality could fund something like that. I don't know. I just wanted to put that out there as a potential idea.
Definitely a need. I will tell you that. We have one counselor for about 750 elementary students. We're seeing our kids come to schools with a lot more trauma. We're doing training for teachers in-house on how to recognize things, but it's not the same thing as getting them the services that they need. So, so at this time, is there any comments or questions? Okay. So, at this time, do we have any public? Yes, please come forward. If you could state your name, please.
My name is April Idy. I am the Alaska PTA president-elect and also the MERS PTSD president. I just wanted to say thank you guys for, you know, looking into the hazardous or school zone safety committee task force. I think that's definitely a need. I have a kid that's very active, really wants to be out there riding his bike. He attends MERS, and I let him ride his bike one time, but that was because I was going to be volunteering in the school in the morning, because I do not like him approaching that intersection of 100th and Victor. I have been in, I go to that intersection every day for the past three years for, during the school year, and I watch these kids trying to cross the intersection. And there's 12 cars sitting at this four-way stop sign, you know, at school pickup. These kids are standing at the corner, waiting, waiting, waiting. Nobody's letting them cross, except for the cars that's right next to them, because they're the only ones that see them. You know, because a lot of cars are, you know, pulled a little too far forward, or, you know, they're waiting, or, you know, being impatient because other cars are not going. There is one of the areas, the one, if you cross over from the northwest side to the northeast side, that is considered a hazardous crosswalk. How is that one different compared to the other three? And students are supposedly not to cross there. There is a student that lives right there on the northeast corner, where the backyard faces that intersection, and you practically could see the entrance to MERS. So, it's what, maybe a half-mile walk? That student's supposed to be riding the bus, is what I keep being told. They should not be walking. If I lived there and I could see the school, my kid could walk to school. So, that needs to be looked at. I've emailed you guys. Hopefully, everyone got it. I know it's kind of a lengthy email, because this intersection has been on the PTSD's agenda for the past three years since I've been there. But after the May 18th of 2018, when a student was hit and broke his leg, I got the call because I just drove past that intersection a few minutes later, got the call saying about a kid being hit. And it's like, okay, seriously made me sick to my stomach, and I started contacting, I think I did the municipality first, or maybe it was the Assembly, Community Council, sorry, Community Council. So, that intersection definitely really needs to be looked at as, I know more signage is being done, the crosswalks have been repainted. I've seen that part. I haven't seen the signs. May 18th of this year, it was a Saturday, 2:00 in the afternoon, a car was hit and actually flipped over on its side. Approaching the intersection is 35 miles an hour, which I think's a bit high coming to like a school zone area. And coming the other day, heading west on 100th, approaching the intersection, I noticed the trees are starting to overgrow, so you don't see the stop sign. It's starting to be blocked. Now, it's summertime, you know, at least there's not as many kids, but there's probably is a lot more pedestrians, you know, bikers, runners, parents walking their kids with strollers. Another school that was not mentioned today was Diamond High School, the corner of 88th and Arlene. A student was hit there in March. And this is, you know, right there at the school, and there is no, there's, you know, crosswalks, but there's no sign stating pedestrians or, you know, could be present at this area. During lunchtimes and after school, before school, the car traffic is about 15 minutes long. And again, it's not as bad because the kids are, maybe it's because the kids are taller or older, you know. They do have an easier time of crossing, but, you know, this kid was, unfortunately, a MERS student, walked into his bus stop, and I knew which kid it was just because of driving that way every day. He was good, you know, he had to get stitches in his head and hurt his leg, but, and I did hear from the municipality that they are adding more signage, or adding signage to that area. But, you know, I don't know what else could be done there. And then, at Diamond and Arlene, they're, the empty lot that's sitting there, new housing's going to be built. They did a study, and they were saying about $1,000, or 1,000 cars could be approaching the 88 Arlene intersection daily, and there has said that the intersection's fine how it is. An extra 1,000 cars just seems a bit much for that area with leaving it the way that it is. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I am, I'm excited about hopefully renewing this committee and taking a look at all of these things and seeing what we can do. But at this time, if there's no other comments or questions, we are adjourned.